And we'll, we'll call the need to work for the finance committee noting that all five current members are attending.
We have one announcement, the fall special town meeting takes place Monday, October 28th at 7:00 PM. We're having the auditorium in the middle of this.
So, so first thing was, um, this is not our official position, but Jim Striakas will be serving as our parliamentarians. Duties of the parliamentarian is to make sure that, for instance, the chair makes sure that there is a motion, a second, that the votes are properly obtained, including roll calls for any members that are remote. And then making note of who it is that's agreed to the warrant article, because we always have to end up having discussions about who volunteered for what.
Is this a bylaw?
No, it's not an official.
And sunset date.
No, I'm not going to change in the bylaw.
Sunset date, exactly.
So, and sunset dates, thank you, Chris's favorite sunset dates. And, and the second thing was, as we go through the agenda, I know we want to at least touch base on, on everything that's, uh, that's, uh, on the warrant as of last week. But what I would ask is that when we take them up for discussion, reconsider the things that are money related, uh, first. So that, for instance, if Jen happens to be here, she can, uh, go through the ones that are most important to her, she's doing a lot of work right now and, and being efficient in that manner might be helpful for her schedule. That's a proposal I have.
Works amazing.
Thank you. Jim, congratulations.
I could double my salary.
He said no.
Does that conclude your remarks?
Yes, those are the two.
Okay. For those of you that were not in attendance at the select board committee chair meeting on Thursday. So, um, one thing that was discussed is the potential of, um, completing a comprehensive plan and seeking funding at the spring town meeting. And Chris made the point that if we are planning on doing that, perhaps we should carefully consider any capital projects that are coming forward, you know, and not go forward with them until we kind of have a sense of the comprehensive plan. So, did I capture that, Chris, or would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, no, we're trying to take things off the table to make, that's going to take a lot of time from a lot of people.
So just having to consider, as where you and Warren articles now, as well as that potential. And I'm happy to share the materials from that meeting.
Sure, that'd be great.
All right, so, given that we want to focus, is it article one and 14, Jenny, that you are, that you haven't put on which articles?
Um, if, I'm okay, we want to just take something, however.
Well, you have the last one, so.
I'm going to say to all the money ones, yeah, however you want to.
Yeah, I would think any money one would be something that Jen would want. It's just my, my concern is if we get into things like the, you know, finance community by law change, which might take hours, um, something like that would seem to be a waste of the time.
We also have a fair number of people here to discuss the act of farm by law, so that takes some time.
Right.
So what would you propose, Ron?
I, I would take them up in the order they're presented, as long as Angus says that they're ready to go, as long as there are money articles.
Okay, so that would be number four would be the first one. CPA funding for the open space recreation plan updates.
So this has been presented to community preservation committee. It's been, the CPC voted that it was eligible use of CPA funds, has not voted its recommendation on the funds, but based on the tender of the last article or the last CPC meeting, it certainly seems on track for favorable vote. Uh, there's, uh, some, uh, other related committees, partner rec voted to, uh, favorably recommend it, open space committee is favorable, Milpon committee, I, I don't know if they've formally taken it up, but they're going to, uh, and the select board voted to endorse it. So basically the, uh, hopefully the article request speaks for itself. It's really something we need to have in order to preserve eligibility for certain grant programs. And the current OSRP, uh, uh, approval from the state runs through December 2025. So, uh, the intent of the proposal is to get some supplemental, uh, funding to support engaging a consultant, primarily to, uh, support with the public engagement process, uh, but also, uh, some other, some other sections. It would, I think it would be largely done in-house, but, uh, it would certainly be helpful to have, uh, some consulting support. So we did highlight in the application, the sections that, uh, oh, the highlights didn't come through. We had highlighted sections of this sheet up on the screen. Uh, these are the, the, this is from the state's workbook on, open space erect plan updates.
In your packet, it was highlighted.
Oh, it was highlighted. Okay, yeah, I don't know why it didn't come through up here. Uh, but anyway, we had highlighted those sections that we, we think would benefit the most from consulting support as opposed to being done entirely in-house. So, I totally understand if people, if you don't want to recommend it until the CPC has, has voted it, although I think the timing there might, I think the CPC doesn't meet till
October 2nd.
October 2nd, so, uh, which I believe is the same night that the FinCom is scheduled to meet as a standalone meeting, so. Uh, but the goal tonight really is to go through each of these at a somewhat high level. Uh, I, I'm not anticipating that we might get into recommendations on any of them, if you choose to, but I think the goal tonight is to go through all of our articles, uh, at a higher level and then, uh, next Thursday's meeting, uh, to go through votes.
And maybe identify missing information or questions that we want to.
Yeah, if you have questions tonight that you want to make sure either the materials don't, uh, answer, you know, you can raise the questions tonight and if we can't answer them tonight, you have to make sure that that's provided for next Thursday's meeting.
So any questions from FinCom on that article, select board's already discussed it?
Is there a, a dollar figure attached to it?
Twenty-five thousand?
Uh, the request is for twenty-five thousand. We are working with, uh, NVPC to fine tune that. Uh, we wouldn't necessarily be working with, with them. We're using them as a parameter for budgeting purposes because they, they would be available and they do support communities on OSRP updates, so we would take their estimated cost as a reasonable benchmark for budgeting. We think twenty-five thousand is probably a bit higher than we would need, but if more was appropriated, the use that would be turned back to CPA, obviously.
Updates are required from time to time.
Oh, yeah.
Every seven years.
Yeah, so isn't that within the timeframe of, you know, how close to the seven year?
December 25th it expires.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll need that, that whole time to get.
Yeah, I, I mean, on one hand, it would be nice to have them normally have approved it. This is reminiscent of us taking up capital improvements ahead of the capital improvement committee. Pushing it to the back end is a little bit problematic. They were meeting, uh, we, we're scheduled before it's, yeah, but you said that they're not taking this up until October?
What was said?
October 2nd is the next CPC meeting?
Right.
Yeah, so the eligibility was approved, but the funding application is still the same, there's support and that kind of thing.
Yeah, right.
So far, it's not approved, yeah.
Right, only if it's not approved, we have to worry about that. Is approval coming?
I believe so.
So my personal preference is to say it's just one move on. Actually, I'll take, I'll make that as a motion. Jim. Uh, Jim, you can, you can, you can make a motion as well.
Or second.
You guys want to do a vote?
Do any discussion, any discussion?
We don't already spoke to Jack, yeah, but, any discussion? All in favor? Two minutes, five for nothing?
One down.
What do you guys think?
We have approved it. Our vote is disapproved.
Oh.
Sunset date?
No, no, who wants to do the rationale for this one?
Everybody's looking down.
Already written in the packet pretty much.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll do the rationale.
You sure, Jim? And, and as far as the sunset date, we could be sunset date, these, the CPA.
Yeah, yeah, and I, we, I had recommended six thirty, twenty-six, the end of next fiscal year. That, that would be plenty of time.
So, um, that sound good to everybody? That's okay, good. Thank you, Jim. Well done.
Right, so the next, the next item is, um, also a CPC, funding article, but this has only been approved, the eligibility, the funding application's not been submitted, so it's a little bit further behind, but we expect to have it before the CPC, at the same, October 2nd. And this is to, um, create trail markers at Milpon, but within a, uh, consistent trail markers throughout town, the same kind of logo and, and numbering system at intersections. Uh, this is partly to facilitate emergency response. Um, Milpon is a little bit further along on the open space committee on this, so they're choosing to submit their articles separately and kind of be a test case for how it's going to look. It's pretty low dollar.
Pretty low dollar?
Yeah, and that, that's high, the forty-five hundreds is probably not that.
So you're looking for the FinCom to have a reaction to this?
I wish, I wish we'd wait till October 2nd after.
No, I don't want to weigh on this. Sounds good to me. If they, if they want to do it, I would propose that we do it, so I may promote that we, uh, recommend yes on this.
All right, then, a second.
Any discussion? If you want to conduct the vote, all in favor? If you know, it's five in favor.
You didn't even ask for a color.
What color do we want, Chris? Yeah, I want to see the. By the way, you did the signs for the content. I have some recommendations on the sign date. So, um, who would like to write this?
I'll take this.
Dan will take this. And what did you say for sunset date, Angus, on, uh, same date?
I, I think that should be more than enough, yeah.
Yeah.
Quite funny, thank you.
Okay, I thought it was twenty-five.
I, I think that's what they asked for, but we don't have it yet.
So, since Ken's here, okay, so really, do we have to sweep twenty-five versus twenty-six? Can we just go to twenty-six? Is everybody comfortable with that? Is there such a fine tuning of the sunset dates that we have to worry about that?
No, I would say if there were, if there were funds you want, make sure the sunset date was right, but forty-five hundred, we can handle it, okay.
Okay, we just, just made it more complicated, but I, I, I vote for the later sunset date, not the early.
I think in general, we should.
I think in general, we should.
We revisit them every.
Right, well, it's not, it's not as if these things don't get reviewed all the way to the end anyway. Jen's on top of all this stuff Angus said, that sunset date is just an easy mechanism to get rid of something. We can always get rid of something whenever we, we can do that anyways, so, anyway, so that's my feeling. So we're agreed on sunset date? Thank you.
Would you vote?
We even have someone going to write the record date.
So we need to just change the date on that before it goes into the booklet?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've noted it in here. The article request form isn't determinative.
Right.
It's a insurance board, but yeah, that's.
All right, I don't believe we voted on that.
No, I don't believe you did.
Are we ready to vote on this?
You said we're lacking something in the pack.
They have not submitted the funding application.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve it based on this, and then all the funding application.
Further discussion, one favor, five. You're welcome. Okay, article six, break-in water tank repairs.
Uh, Bob is here, and I, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but the materials in the packet, hopefully it stands for itself. My, my hope is that there's not going to be any local cost, or if there is, it would just be the insurance deductible. Uh, but since at the time the warrant closed last week, we didn't know that, and we still don't know that to this day. Uh, we felt, and I would mark, and we felt it was prudent to keep a placeholder on there. Uh, but we are working to, uh, with the engineering consultant, uh, and the vendor, uh, who, they built the tank in the first place, uh, to see if they, you know, it may be that they're going to do the repairs and not charge the town. Even if they do that, there would be some, uh, ancillary costs like refilling the water tank. Uh, but, you know, my, my expectation is we'd be putting an insurance claim and that that would cover those costs. But this is put in kind of as a contingency in case that is not correct.
The work would have to be done irrespective of how the insurance company or the vendor respond to it. So this basically locks in the ability to do the work, and then we sort out everything else.
That's right, and, and as it notes in the request, there is, they have time to, you know, there's up to a year to, to remedy the problem, but, but Mark, you know, it's, wants to get right on it and get it repaired, ideally before the winter comes this, this winter, so, and I fully support that.
Where, where would the money come from?
Uh, so I had canceled it in on my, which wasn't part of what I submitted, but, but I have this kind of, you know, I, I kind of roughed out where I think the money would come from. I put it in as retained earnings could come from water stabilization. I thought retained earnings was probably better since it wasn't specifically budgeted in, or forecast in the, uh, stable, water stabilization capital plan. So I thought retained earnings was probably the most appropriate source, but I had to talk that over with, with Bob or the water commission, that was kind of my.
But it'll be coming out of water.
Water.
And, you know, the interesting thing between free cash and retained earnings is like the debate we have between free cash and stabilization. They're kind of two pockets in the same pair of pants.
So I do have a question on this. Pay five thousand dollars for inspectional oversight when we had that before and the system failed, I, I'm kind of objective. It seems to me that at the very least, Tate and Howard should eat the cost of the inspection.
But that's one of those incidental things that will be fleshed out as you go through the process. In other words, you could be correct, and that should be pursued, but you don't know the outcome. In the end, you may actually have to have the inspection on our dime. That's not what we're working towards, but you're listing the thing that could be the expense.
I still wanted to make that point.
Yes, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I don't know, it's why, it's why I turned around to Bob, because, yeah, I hope that the point he's made. We're, 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 uh, best case scenario here is that it's all on someone else, it's not our fault. So the vendor, the inspection, you know, the only thing that I understand is, is probably incidental and may not be recaptured as the, uh, the water we purchased from Roland to replace the water we have to discharge to get the tank down to work and, that's the bit. Is that a fair way to say it?
Or if there's staff overtime, which I, I don't know, I would assume the work would take place within normal working hours, but I don't know that. So if there was staff overtime, I, I'm not sure that that's something, uh, either the vendor or insurance could cover.
Right, exactly.
I mean, the, the department does budget, you know, the water budgets for, for overtime and, you know, wages above regular, so it wouldn't necessarily need a supplemental funding sources, but it is obviously coming pretty early in the fiscal year and.
It's part of the discussion, what, what do we absorb as opposed to what do other people absorb? That's really the discussion. Ideally, in a, in a fully insured world, we would have no cost at all, which we're going to work towards, but I, we can't guarantee that that's.
And so does it kind of jeopardize our case if we've already funded this through town meeting? With the vendor?
I think this is very similar to other things, where we allow for expenditure up to a certain amount. That's not permission to therefore go and, and necessarily spend that. And we've done that in the past.
Instead, it's up to the water commissions to put pressure on Tatum and to look at it to satisfaction.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're in agreement on this, but, but the point is, is in the end, you've got to allow for some flexibility on water in Fox Park, because they may have some obligation of this amount of money. Hopefully, there, there'll be no obligation on an apartment, there probably will be some. I don't think it, I don't think it hurts to itemize where it might come from, I don't think it would help with the discussion, actually.
So is there any feedback yet after last week's meeting? Mark was going to go back.
I was on horse and mix last week, so I have, I haven't talked to Mark just briefly today about being here next year. And I did talk to Angus, I think, Wednesday, about pulling the article in, but that's about that. I haven't had any real in-depth discussion with either one.
You're not going to get much feedback on the stuff we've been talking about within the, how we, so. You know, the, the, everybody's going to drag their feet on, on committing to anything.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, so I vote approved.
I, I would recommend holding out on recommending, because we will have more information next Thursday. We might not know, I'm sure we won't know definitively, but by that point, I think we would at least.
In regards, though, to the number, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to say not to exceed forty-four.
If we feel that it is covered by insurance, and if they can verify that, then, uh, I mean, there's still a lot of nuance.
You still could have to pay for the water.
Correct.
I'm just going to, I'm making a motion not to exceed that number, we can, they can always come in on it.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, we've pretty much fluid on other water chemicals where we're, we're approving the concept per se, but this, you know, the, the details may work out a little bit different. I don't mind waiting one week on this, man. I agree with Angus on that point.
Yeah, I mean.
I do, I, I wouldn't wait one week, but, and I would wait, I would wait one week, but when we get, but I wouldn't hesitate to pull the trigger at some point in time, because you, you need the ability to do the work, because what comes to show, if we're in dispute with the insurance company, we're still going to have to do the work.
Yeah, I'd prefer that we just wait until next week and do the conditional now.
Yeah, one week.
We'll know more, presumably by next week, or hopefully by next week, we'll hear something back from from Tatum Howard slash the vendor.
Right.
You know, the, the. Are you entered to get that?
Would you withdraw your motion, or should we?
I didn't even make it, so I don't have to withdraw. I just think it's more efficient to do it now. Nothing's going to, the number would be not to exceed the forty-four, six, sixty. The worst that comes in is you might eat the water at the ten grand. You're going to be looking at it again in another week, so whatever, I can wait.
All right. And so are you speaking as FinCom member or?
I am only a Water Com member, I can't be a member of any other committee.
All right, it just seems like you're representing Water Com.
Bob's here.
I'm sure.
Yeah, so, so.
So your math is.
I keep my, uh, well.
Friendly observation.
Yeah, no, I, I take your point, but you, you know that, that I do work with them, not for them.
Right, just want to keep that clear, all right. All right, article seven, Little Street Bridge, that's another two B D.
Yeah, and I would recommend, you know, let's, so that October 2nd meeting is, is penciled in as a finance committee meeting. And I don't know if we want to, ba- basically, when we open the bids on October 1st. Uh, so far, we've had eighteen different prospective vendors pull the bid package. We have the pre-bid site visit tomorrow. Uh, so I think we'll have a pretty good idea, and it's a mandatory pre-bid visit, so any prospective vendor that does not show up tomorrow is not eligible to bid. So we'll definitely have a very good idea twenty-four hours from now, what the universe of vendors, if it's going to be three, or nine, or, or twenty-five. Uh, it could be any of those. So when we open the bids on October 1st, we will send to mass DOT under their regulations the lowest three apparent low bid costs. That's all still subject to, you know, reference checks and pre-qualifications and so forth, but, uh, on October 1st, we'll have, we'll know whether the lower, the apparent low bid is within budget, and our, our hope, and it's not a blind hope, I think it's very, anyhow, our, our, our hope, our hope is that the budgeted amount is, uh, that the, the bid falls within that, in which case this article will go away. This is only here as a contingency, and, uh, so I would say since we're not going to know till October 1st, I don't know that it's going to be productive to bring it up again on the 26th, we might just want to pencil it in for the meeting at a second.
Related to that. We set that third meeting anticipating that even something like water pump might be more prominent on that, that evening, so, you know, I don't know what your feeling is coming and joining us on that day. But, you know, Angus, probably next week will know whether, whether there's a need for Middle Street. Are you guys joining us? Because that should be done on a joint session, don't you think?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
So next.
Your meeting's set October 2nd?
Yeah, Wednesday.
So we, we did that kind of anticipating, I mean, if below they get everything wrapped up in two meetings, we thought, we'll have stuff that we have to discuss anyways.
Yeah.
But, you know, it may come to path that one or two of these things fall out to that date, that's all we're saying.
We don't have a meeting in a second.
No, we don't, but during CPC meeting at six, so.
Are we flexible on time, by the way? Uh, the 7th, on the 2nd, yeah. Are we flexible on time? Not late?
Seven, or potentially I could try.
Yeah, right, just, are you at all flexible to any degree? I, I'm always flexible to some degree, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it a little bit more, actually.
Sounds good.
But I, I would pencil in inside the, the six, I would stick, one eagle tells whether, okay, whether, because, you know, we'll see, keep it all, be flexible.
Angus, when did you say the second meeting was?
Uh, tomorrow, tomorrow, ten thirty.
Thank you.
And that's not, that's not the bridge.
And then bids are due on the first, right?
Correct.
Yep. Then we open the second day.
Yeah, we open that day.
Okay, article eight, Page Pipes Day Crosswalk.
So this has been, uh, in process for quite a while, and this is, you know, the construction cost of the, the latest, uh, staff, it's, it's a big number, we certainly understand that. And, uh, you know, when I presented this to the board last week, I had, I had said if the collective wisdom is to postpone this till the spring, I would not personally be unhappy about that. I do think if it is voted this fall, it does give us, uh, it position, it would position the project better to be able to actually put it out to bid over the winter, get someone under contract, and, and certainly would increase the likelihood of getting something constructed next construction season. Uh, but at the same time, it's a big amount. Uh, the capital improvement committee will meet this Thursday, and hear, hear about this for the first time. They've been hearing about the Page Pipes Day crossing for a while, with, this has been, uh, you know, under study. We've got prior town meeting funding articles to bring it to this stage of design and permitting, uh, although some of that was offset by state grants, so interdependent part, and at least in my opinion, on how it's received by the capital improvement committee, uh, in terms of whether, uh, you know, whether I think this is ripe for the fall. Terms of the amount provided, uh, we just, we did receive that from the engineering consultant, uh, early last week, uh, kind of just under the wire to get it into this, uh, cycle, so we wanted to have that option. They did say they have confidence in the number, uh, so they do think that's a, a good amount for budgeting purposes. But we understand it's a, you know, it's a big ticket item, and, uh, is, you know, going to, uh, bring up questions about amounts of stabilization, and whether we're, you know, carrying up the stabilization and looking ahead, because we're doing a, this is part of a overall Main Street corridor planning process, where this is one of six different crossings that are, uh, getting some level of, uh, review. This one's further ahead, and this has had more resources put toward it to get it to a hundred percent, uh, permitting. But my point is there are other crossings that are, you know, lagging, you know, one to three years behind, so I, I think people will probably ask, you know, how many more of these are we going to be asked to pay for? And, uh, just preemptively answer that in case people have that question, which is that a, a major, uh, rationale for the Route 113 corridor planning process is to position capital improvements for, uh, state and federal funding through the, the tip, the transportation improvement program, which is a five-year uh, plan that, uh, the region does, uh, to program its federal transportation money. And looking ahead, we certainly hope and expect that at least some number of projects or a project in West Newbury will become competitive for state's federal funding over the next many years, several years, five years at that speed. Uh, but if, based on both the number of improvements that we, uh, feel we're going to need. If, based on both the number of improvements that we uh, feel we're gonna need. Based on our relative, you know, our challenges in competing effectively with within the region. Uh, because our needs pale in both, you know, number and cost to some of our neighboring communities. Uh, and they've had projects in the pipeline for many, many years longer than we will have, so I think it's. Just to be realistic, I think, you know, it's not like the state feds are gonna swoop in and. Pick up major capital costs in West Newbury anytime in the next couple of years, and and I think even if we get a TIP-funded project in the next five years, it would be honestly an enormous win, because. It's just us, it's a long process. Uh, so I think it's a great project, um, and I and I do think, uh, you know, we're we're, I don't wanna. I'm fully supportive of the project, but I don't want it to become a big battle, if it becomes a big battle. I'd rather, let's take another six months and talk more about it, the proposal's not gonna change, the amount's not gonna change, but if the community needs more time to. Process the question of the three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar funding allocation, which is reasonable if they want more time. Fully in favor of that, but if people are comfortable recommending that uh, this cycle. That's great, too, uh, that, and that would increase the probability we could actually get a construct in the next uh, next season.
So the wall of the cost was that wall, that they solved that problem or?
Yeah, so the wall, a big thing with the wall, and and I, this, this drawing here, this was created at the twenty-five percent design stage, so this is not exactly. What a hundred percent design is. Um, uh, we're working with the vendor to get an updated graphic that's, it's it's very close, but the. The big issue was this wall, because the state right-of-way, or one of the big issues was the wall, the the state right-of-way basically. Cuts through what's shown as a sidewalk, and so during the twenty-five percent design process, they said. That's not acceptable from a state design standpoint, so you have two choices, you can either. Slide the sidewalk south, so it's fully within the state right-of-way. Or you can push it north to where it's fully outside the right-of-way, in which case you're having to rebuild. The retaining wall, so we had to do some uh, additional analysis out in the field, uh, some survey services were engaged. To basically see if the sidewalk could be slid down south within the right-of-way, and still provide enough width. For that driveway, and the answer is yes, so the hundred percent design. Has, and so right now it's showing bisecting that, that's not correct, that was the twenty-five percent, a hundred percent. Uh, which we do actually have, um. Actually, no, no, we don't, but uh, we don't have a graphic showing that, but it's, the sidewalk's gonna be fully within the state right-of-way. Uh, and one of the things that we're seeking is a. During a hundred percent permitting is a design exception uh, to allow the width of that sidewalk, I believe, to be four and a half feet. Instead of, I think it's five feet, I ca- I'm a little fuzzy in the details, but we needed to ask the state to squeeze the width of the sidewalk a little bit to allow it to fit. So there's been a lot of like, you know, a lot of that kind of.
Did they ever consider just changing the right-of-way line?
That was talked about, but what we were told was that was gonna be.
Take your money.
Yeah, that's a, you're dealing with. I didn't see that, that would have, that would have.
It's, yeah.
Quite a lot of times, but yeah, that was.
Government, yeah.
That seemed like.
Yeah, and and we'd be the first thing I would.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about.
When is the corridor study uh, being released?
Uh, we are gonna have a major public meeting the second week of November, and that's, that's gonna basically wrap up the corridor. Process. Within that, this, there's, there's separate individual products within that, this is one.
Right.
We had a separate, uh, we had a state budget earmark to look at the uh, middle high school crossing at Nick's Pizza. We actually, we signed a contract over the summer uh, with the engineer, we should have a kickoff meeting this Monday on that. So that's like within the corridor, but a separate project, we have a separate budget earmark uh, that came from the Mass Office of Economic Development that was. Specifically targeted at the town center, and looking at traffic coming in L L Square. We have not yet signed a contract with that, because we have until the end of calendar year twenty twenty-six to use that, so we intentionally kind of. Pushed that back, because we just didn't wanna, we don't wanna try to take on everything all at once, so there's um. You know, one, two, three. Discrete crossing projects in addition to the corridor project. And then there's a couple of other crossings, like the library and Town Hall, like, right in front of this building, and also the uh. Uh, Ocean Meadow and Way to the River.
Those are part of the corridor.
They're part of the corridor, but that's just a conceptual plan, so that's not a twenty-five percent engineering plan.
Is there any benefit to consolidating these projects in terms of TIP funding, to make a bigger project?
It's actually, their their advice was actually the opposite, uh, we had a, we had a meeting with a guy named Dan Fielding from DOT about uh, two weeks ago. Uh, with the consultant. And their advice uh. Was to carve up the projects into discrete projects, uh, because once you get into looking at um. You know, a a linear project where you're talking, you know, sidewalks, right-of-way impacts. The costs really get astronomical, and they felt that, based on um. Their their kind of uh, backlog of projects already within the TIP in our region. That in order to have a more realistic path to funding, their advice was to actually look at discrete projects like this, rather than something that was. You know, trying to cover. A length of corridor, because, partly because of the state's complete streets policy, once they're looking at the corridor. They're gonna be looking at having two compliant sidewalks on both sides of the corridor. So even those sections of road that we might think of as being in good shape, because they have one sidewalk. Once you put that through DOT, that's, they're gonna be looking at adding a second sidewalk, which is not. And I think you heard the comment during one of the public meetings, I definitely told the Arkansas consultant that. You know, a lot of what's driving this is safety of crossings, and while we'd always like more sidewalks, and there are sections of road, like here to the library that. Uh, and and others that eventually would like to have a sidewalk. I think we would rather have a sidewalk along five miles, rather than having sections that were trying to shoehorn in a second sidewalk, but the state is very. Can be very inflexible on its complete streets model, in fact, this guy Dan Fielding with DOT basically told us that that. You know, he said some reviewers within their own agency from the Complete Streets office that they they really will not tolerate design exceptions.
And crossings and traffic coming are uh, a need that. We have to regress uh, pretty soon. Uh, and sidewalks might be actually secondary to crossings for paying points.
That's how I would view it, I think that's certainly the Republican vote we've gotten, is is people are very, very concerned about safety of crossing.
Right.
Uh, we we don't get much correspondence, there's some. Uh, and there's some in this vicinity, there's definitely Chase Street residents that would like to see a sidewalk from Page School of the Chase Street, you know, there's definitely been some correspondence on sidewalks, but most of what.
Right, but people forget crossings, and 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 I I think in observation, like if you talk to people in libraries. Crossing, 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 that distresses them down there, and at the times that we've. Done something special down there for crossings, they were greatly relieved, because it did. Have a profound benefit, you know, safety benefit, and so my my only question is, is 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 it gonna be. Beneficial to wait for the car before we take this up in the fall, that's my only question.
I don't think substantively, uh, because this has been through, you know, it's been, it didn't get to the. It's at the hundred percent design stage now, it's not a hundred percent approved, but it's been at that stage for for quite a while. Uh, but to get there, it had to be approved at the twenty-five percent design level, which it was, and DOT provided its comments, so at this point, it's it's. It's really not influenced by the corridor study, there could be voters who may. Wanna see the whole corridor plan before voting, that's in which case that's, that's certainly their.
You may have to speak to the whole corridor plan.
Yeah. Yeah, but in terms of, you know, money-wise, or or in terms of readiness, it it really isn't uh. Isn't connected to that.
And how would this be managed, would it be internal staff, or will we hire a consultant to manage the after construction?
That's a good question, um, it doesn't pass the threshold for requiring an O P M. Manage it, but I also think DOT, since it's a state road, is gonna wanna be really involved, so that's a good question that I can get, I can work and see more.
It just seems like a pretty large project for a town of our size, you know, staff wants to manage.
Yeah, but it's not unrealistic to think that DOT would actually have somebody on site, but at the time, yeah.
Okay, so is there other information FinCon would like to feel the decision on this? Thoughts about now versus in the spring?
What are your thoughts, what what actually do you take it?
We took no action, actually, we were gonna vote to. The light to the spring, and then decided to. Keep it on for now, so.
Just go to C I C?
Yes, just Thursday, yeah.
Okay, so I would, I would wait for C I C to begin.
But I also wanna keep it on the agenda for the fall, it's not gonna get any more powerful in the spring, the number's the number. Pretty reliable this fall. That, yeah, like, like dollars too, rather than instead of loading up all the money in the spring, and the excess on discussion. And you'd be ready to pull the trigger on the spring and get it going, so I think the timing weather-wise goes well, too.
I'm just having a hard time with the, the total cost of it.
I am too. Those will tell you if they don't want to pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the workforce has said this trip, I mean, if. Voters don't want to pay for it, then you won't do it.
I know, but I have to talk in my opinion as as a voter, so if we're voting as a board.
Yeah, it it won't get the number, it's not gonna change marginally this spring, so it is what it is, and.
So are we committed that this has to be done, I guess that's another question, I mean, has the select votes had this, you know, the new crossing?
Find it kind of perilous to give this by down the design path, you know, you've got issues with safety on the crossing, and it's safe, you're not gonna.
So that's, I guess that's a longer point of, you know, thinking about these things, who are we charging it?
With all due respect, we gave this a lot of thought at prior boards before this board. I mean, absolutely one hundred percent approved going forward with the safety audit.
Yeah.
Going forward with twenty-five percent design, and so. Obviously, elections happen, compositions of boards change, but, but I I I wouldn't balk at any suggestion that this was not. Thought through at the impetus, because it was.
That wasn't what I was.
Okay.
Trying to say, I'm just, you know, I don't think at that time, did you have any idea that it would be almost four hundred thousand dollars?
Wayne told us it would be about four hundred thousand.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
He he said, and he obviously had tons of experience with DOT, but he said by the time this is all said and done, they're gonna connect it to this, and this, and this, and they're gonna make it a. A big project, yeah, so.
So I think it's our obligation to put it out there, you know, you've got issues, you have a remedy, and there's a cost associated, the voters can decide if they wanna fund it.
Yeah.
You gotta have the discussion sometime, we'll have a quarter report in Canada, so if it needs to fit into a context, we will have a context. Um, the question is, in my mind is, do we continue discussion on this tonight? In which case, you know, we should, we should proceed with that, or are we gonna wait one week and take it up again next week?
I think we need to take it up next week, but if there's any information.
Right, 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 right.
I mean, you also made the point that, you know, the future of the Page School is is in question perhaps, and how does that. So I mean, there's a lot of.
Ten is plus down.
I I know, I'm just saying, there's a lot of factors, you know.
And there there are, but if we're gonna wait on C I C, let's wait for the input from C I C, and then we can, we can discuss it further, that's all I'm saying, is because. We've got some other stuff that we'll want to to, that's all.
Angus, have the one hundred percent plan been circulated?
Uh, no, and I will send them around, uh, I'll send around what I have, I have a plan set. But I think it's the twenty-five percent, uh, but it's the plan sheets with the detailed drawings and the. Cross-sections and all of that, so I'll send that around right away, and then I'll. I don't, I don't recall seeing a hundred percent design set, so, but I'll I'll find out from T E C, whatever the latest is. But I do have a, a plan set of engineer drawings that that are much more detailed than, I mean, they're the same, but it's shows all the, it shows the detail you were.
But we may be at a hundred percent.
Well, it's working its way to a hundred percent permitting, and and we have had confirmation that it's it's going to be permitted this fall, but. But I don't recall seeing a, you know, a plan set. Uh, the plan set I have, I believe, is marked twenty-five percent.
And that's what's on the website and project page, right?
Uh, yeah, yep.
Yeah, I I can see another reason that, assuming we do want to go ahead, is that it would be done at this meeting, the special town meeting, and that. Um, it is a light meeting, um, in terms of the number of articles, and. I don't think there's, there are many articles on there that are gonna be on. Topics of significant discussion, I think this could be a topic of significant discussion, and we'll have time to do that. Whereas in the spring, we don't know yet what we're gonna have, and, you know, rather than have a four-hour meeting in the spring, and if that were happening again, right, yeah, let's not do that again.
Right, no, that's an excellent point, again, going back to the corridor study, having it in hand will will, I'm sure, be part of the discussion. So it would be helpful to have that.
And going back to the money, Angus, is it three sixty-sixty, your knowledge, like all-inclusive, like the tax?
Yeah, that does include a contingency amount that the engineer had built into their uh, their unit cost estimates.
That's ten percent.
Yeah.
I think that's too pronounced.
Yeah, and they're they're uh. I mean, you know, no, no, it's invalid, that's for sure, but but they are, uh, T E C is uh, one of the top. Safe routes to schools and like pedestrians firms, so uh, you know, all of the unit. Costs are gonna be reflective of uh, you know, recently bid projects with DOT.
And it was literally a stoplight, from what I see, maybe a little, but I kinda read in the paper, right?
Well, it's a push-button activated R R F B, uh, rapid flasher beacon, so it's not a stoplight, but yeah, but yeah, would. It would stop traffic if it was activated.
One oh. I wonder if there would be, uh, it's probably too far along to do this, but I was wondering just now if there would be a way to package it with the Middle Street Bridge. If you had a big, big civil contractor in town. You know, an issue, this is a change order, you might have the resources, you know, versus just mobilizing the one job, but it's probably too difficult to merge the two.
Yeah, I think, I think Middle Street Bridge is way, way, way too far, we don't wanna do anything, we have to break the momentum there now, we will be toast.
Well, the other problem with Middle Street Bridges, that's a shit cost with Newbury Ford.
Right, right.
Create the perception, and you could be sliding funds.
And it's also, it's under, because that's funded in part by ARCA money, it has to be under contract by the end of December. Or we lose, you know, like four hundred thousand dollars of ARCA money, so.
All right.
Looking on?
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Angus.
All right, so we'll skip ahead to Article ten, reproach resilience planning.
Ten, nine.
Well, there's no dollar there, right?
But it's Jenny, sorry.
Well, we should, we should, we should take it off.
I mean, it's not.
I see dollars.
Jenny wrote it, so.
I see a blank, which is in front of the bottom, all right, Jenny, sorry. I'm just kidding, over you.
Please, let's not do that.
Do you, are you taking it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you want me to do this, Angus, or?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so it's basically a housekeeping thing, um, it's just to um, authorize uh, to rescind the unused. Money that was authorized. For those two dollars.
And what is the N W P A T acronym?
Water Abatement?
Yes.
Water Pollution Abatement.
It is, I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, right, right, it's. You you can see it in the detail, it's a mass water pollution abatement. This is a, this is, this is close to absolute housekeeping engine.
It is, and it will just stay on our statement of indebtedness until it's rescinded, so.
So why would we not do this?
Why would we not, thank you, Rick.
So do we need to wait until next week for this, or do we go ahead?
Yeah, I moved it, we uh, approved. Our request for rescind uh, authorized unissued debt as John, into the back of.
Thank you.
Right, need for the discussion, that's the one.
Just a question, the Septic Lawn Program is over, it's been a cycle.
Twenty years.
No one time, and that's.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, nineteen ninety-nine is the date, Sean, here's.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, but for the last many town, uh, FinCon booklets, it said in the narrative that the program's not accepting any new. Uh, applications, it was, I think, and that was before I started, I don't know when they stopped.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I recall, I mean, we're almost at the end of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we paid it off, this is, yeah, it's just saying we're not gonna borrow, you know, authorized borrowing, which actually borrowed.
Okay, all in favor?
All right, fine.
Finance committee.
Make motion to rescind the authorized and unissued debt article as written.
Second, there's a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote. All in favor. Happens to be unanimous. And this is the type of thing that we don't do a sunset table on.
Yeah.
Because it's housekeeping.
Yeah.
And Jenny, it's already done. It'll be done automatically the day after town meeting. Cool.
Rational.
Lots of writing, that's right. You know, I would think this.
Is it tough?
We can write this one.
Okay, all right.
Yes, for seconds. And there's no sunset table.
Now we're on to Article ten. Right?
Yeah.
So this is for matching funds for the M V P grant, ten percent? Any questions from FinCon?
Have you taken action?
Is there a reason to wait? I mean, I think scope is still being.
Yeah, so. Yeah. It it is exactly. And there's actually a uh, a couple of meetings scheduled for Wednesday, um, one with Michelle Rowland um, of, you know, the M V P program, uh, to try to get some feedback from her on a couple of, couple of issues. Um, and uh, yeah, I think it makes sense to wait until our next meeting before we take this up. But I mean, if there are general questions.
Right, I I would, you know, I would think so. Perhaps we have something else.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so.
But just like you said, we can say, we can also continue with questions next week.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, we will have Christine Wallace, project manager, next week as well as Bush and our conservation agent, Clay Hutchinson, will all be here next Thursday. But but I did bring the maps that are in the packet and, you know, we can speak generally to it if you guys.
Sure, I I think you should remind us of what we've seen today.
Yeah, okay. So sure, so um, you know, at June thirtieth, we've completed the the previous um, M V P grant um, uh, project. And that was essentially a a risk assessment for the road, trying to understand where the risks were, where they were sort of grading the risks and, you know, uh, severity and uh, some sense of time um, for the different risks. Of course, everything's subject to reality and the kinds of time, but um, uh, and that's has some really good information, and I don't know if people had a chance to to look at it. It's online on the uh, C C R C website, but um, uh, so the next, where we've sort of headed now is to an alternatives analysis for how do we deal with the risks that have been addressed or have been um, identified. And there are a handful of options of how we might address those risks in just the broadest form. And it doesn't make sense to talk about those options at this point in time, because they'll be fleshed out through this through this process. But um, there is, you know, there there will likely be some uh, near term uh, issues addressed, but the 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 focus of this project will be to um, identify what are the long term options? What were the medium term and the long term options? Short term would be the the simple things that we do early on. And um, get some baseline information such as uh, a uh, good survey of the entire road identification of drainage features and and everything that that identify, you know, that sort of defines the road and its surroundings. Um, so that will be necessary information for anything else going forward.
So this is uh, ten percent of the cost of the work.
Right, so right now, the cost of the work is projected by G I consultants, who is the consultant we used for the previous project. And there's, we're not married to that consultant, but we have some money to use now that was um, uh, appropriated the last town meeting that is helping us to come up with a reasonable estimate of what we'll do next and what it might cost. And so the number that they came up with, and this is really a high wall number, and we all understand that, that was what we wanted to do. We didn't want to go with a low wall number um, is was six hundred thousand, so ten percent of that would be sixty thousand.
And and the end result of spending that money will have way more knowledge than I currently do.
Right, and 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 with, you know, if things, depending upon how things go, we might have a path forward.
Right.
Or a partial path forward.
Or at least we'll have a better discussion about what we have to deal with.
Yeah, yeah. But but there would be no significant infrastructure construction associated with this.
But this this is about learning how to deal with something that's happening right in front of us.
Right.
So, and 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 the work to date, I think, has been pretty impressive.
Yeah, I think it was a pretty good report.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think it came out very well. There was a lot, you know, a lot of, a lot of good work done by a lot of people and and uh, um, you know, we all learned something. We all learned quite a bit.
So is this a grant that we get for sure?
No.
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 Meeting that Rick referred to, uh, which tomorrow with Michelle Rowland. She's the state. Oh, oh, I thought tomorrow was Wednesday. Okay.
It's been a long day.
The uh, yeah, she's the state grant administrator for the M V P action grant. She was the uh, contract administrator for the the grant that that uh, for the F Y twenty four. And so she, uh, it had taken a while to get on her calendar, which she started reaching out to her in early August, but uh, this Wednesday was the first time that she could accommodate us. So she's she's gonna give us some feedback on whether what we put together looks to her to be something that is gonna be, you know, she'd never say you're gonna get it, you're not gonna get it, but is it, is it, you know, something that's within the parameters of the grant, something that they would look favorably on the in the input that she has given. She's been very supportive of us of the town west member going forward to kind of the next step of of seeking another M V P action grant. And uh, Christine Wallace, our our project manager for this, did go ahead and pulled from the M V P, this was not part of your materials, but I can include this for next Thursday's meeting. Uh, she went ahead and pulled information from the M V P page of other grants and their scope and their amounts that included alternative analysis and design work and um, and and the dollar amounts. And there's some big ticket grants that M V P program has awarded on the order of half a million dollars or more uh, uh, for this type of work. So, you know, they certainly know that the, you know, permitting for any kind of work, uh, uh, you know, riverfront area is is extraordinarily complex and costly. And it seems that the state is is definitely putting their money where their mouth is in terms of climate change resiliency and and trying to uh, not just help, but really encourage communities to to look at this, uh, these challenges proactively. So we will see what we hear on Wednesday, and if she tells us, hey, cut it by two thirds, obviously, we'll take that input and we'll sharpen our pencil, but but our our sense at a staff level is there's plenty of precedent precedent for the Commonwealth approving grants on this order. And so things like survey, wetlands delineation, if we can get a nine to one match, you know, and we're paying ten cents on the dollar. Uh, our thought at a staff level is to to go big. Uh, I do understand from last week's climate change resiliency committee meeting, there's still some uh, you know, gnashing of teeth within that committee as to whether maybe some of this is more than is needed. Uh, I think at a staff level, we feel, like Rick said, it's all going to be needed. You're going to need survey. Do you need it right now? No, will you need it? Yeah, you will. So if we if we're in a position to potentially get, you know, uh, uh, a major state grant to help offset those costs, that seems to us to be a good uh, strategy.
So assuming this moves forward, the next step would be design. I mean, how long till we're actually spending money doing stuff?
So that's one of the things within the scoping discussions. Our 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 goal would be that some of the, some of this would take us to a twenty five percent design. Uh, I think, you know, keep in mind, right now, we're at a stage of seeking the local match. The actual grant application wouldn't go until um, the first part of twenty twenty five. Uh, I think it's generally around March or April.
Yeah.
That these grants are due. So so, you know, here we're early September with kind of a first cut at it. Uh, the grant application's gonna be more, you know, it's gonna have gone through more iterations. And then if and when we get the grant funding, uh, we've kind of informally committed that we would do, we would seek multiple proposals uh, as engineering services, it's technically exempt from thirty B, but it's always good business practice to get multiple proposals. Uh, certainly when you're dealing with this kind of money. So our goal would be to have this process emerge with one or or possibly two locations of emerging as with with kind of consensus around what specifically the community wants to do there, so we could put those resources toward actual um, design toward permitting. That is absolutely our goal at a staff level, but I I don't think I can say that definitively right now, because I think there's too many uh, questions, including there's not anything close to community consensus on what exactly we want to do, because the alternatives analysis is a big part of building that.
But this does have some design element.
It does, yeah.
But yeah, but yeah, no, that's, it does definitely, but that's not, I don't think that's a major.
No, that would only come once the alternatives analysis kind of uh.
I mean, there's certain areas that, you know, even to get through the mid, the near term or the midterm, we're gonna need to do something.
Right.
And one other thing.
Twenty percent of the moment happens to be toward some level of.
Right.
And and one thing that's important to bear in mind also is when you get into five minute project with NEPA, the Mass Environmental Policy Act, part of that is a required alternatives analysis. So some of the scoping that's that we've been working toward here is to do things that are going to be required unless we get into permitting anyway. So um.
Conservation as well.
Yeah, alternatives analysis with conservation as well.
Yeah, I mean, you you can see where the basis dollar amounts go to, when they go to topographic and and boundary surveys. And then they go to geotechnical analysis, and then you end up with some level of response to that based upon those two elements. I mean, you know, I think we've got to move the process forward.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely fair fair discussion of like, on something like survey or wetlands delineation, whether to do the entire two and a half mile corridor as that study area or to do a subset. That's a very legitimate, you know, and there's a lot of back and forth happening.
Yeah.
And so so that's where Rick said this is kind of a high ball number, because it's based on assuming, you know, that we have wetlands delineation and uh, survey for the entire study area. So that could be pared back. You know, in in uh, working with staff, I I met with Christine and Clay again earlier today. Clay was saying, even if you're um, even if you're pretty confident that your project area might be, you know, here, if you have to do wetlands replication to satisfy that permit, you're gonna need to do your wetlands and survey on areas that aren't when you first look at it, aren't part of the scope, but they might have to be to do your wetlands replication. He was kind of
Right.
guiding toward like, if you're gonna do it, like, just do the whole study area. So but that's all, you know, a climate change committee is.
But the other part of that is sometimes you think your observations, that they, by doing that work, you may have some of your observations changed. So so you you can piecemeal some things and then in the end find out that it would have been better to look at it in its entirety. So I, again, very supportive of this is going to C I C.
Yes.
So guys, any more questions about this? We're gonna take it up next week, right?
Yep.
So any more questions on this tonight?
I guess I guess I have one for Angus and Rick. But just big picture, conceptually, this is a lot, what we're looking at here is it really mitigates, is probably one of the base expenses we're gonna have in this town for years to come, right? I mean, this is, this is colossal, right? This is not a.
Yeah, and and unless we throw up our hands and run away.
Right.
Yeah.
I think you.
This will be huge.
Not gonna have water infrastructure. We've got a lot of big things coming.
But this is probably, I mean, depending how you go about it, but this very well could be the the biggest ticket, even among those. Well, I mean.
If it's bigger than the school, I'll just leave it that.
You know, there 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 are probably three projects of of the same order of magnitude.
Exactly.
You know, the same number of euros potentially involved.
Right, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be assuming that we know where this is gonna head up yet. But like Rick just said, this is a biggie. Like you just said, it's a biggie. But without some further expenditure, we can't define how big it is. But this is the whole purpose of this type of work is to help clarify how big it is, whether you can address it piecemeal over time, whether you have to get there early or later.
I I guess, you know, my comments at the beginning about the map, the comprehensive plan is, you know, we've identified this, we've talked about the school, but I feel like we need an overarching thing to say, the community thinks page school is number one.
Priority.
This is this number five, this is number two. I mean, I think this is kind of like we're it's an echo chamber here, people that are concerned about climate change, and we don't know that the whole community is on board with it, so. Just something to think about.
Take that when you pit it against schools and water.
They do pit it against, they do pit it against, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's the reality, right? In terms of, say, on the high in dollars.
I don't know. No one's shoveling any dollars. Let me know that. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, we should just throw out climate change.
So guys, again, so do you wanna continue with questions and and discussion, or you wanna wait for next week to pick it up again? Next week, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good on this one.
All right, right. Number eleven, townwide dead ash tree removal, fifty thousand dollars by D W. This is part of the program that we talked about, right?
Yes.
In the spring.
Yeah, although I think your your number, you might be looking at the one before the addition of the, because I renumbered the one I put in the break. Go on. So eleven is the River Road and it's all is the Ash Tree.
Oh. They crew River.
I'm just going from this.
Oh, from that. Oh, from uh. Oh, okay, that's funny. I transpose them on the the two documents. Okay, yeah. Got it.
Well, we can take them both up at the same time. I mean, we're not ready to vote, right? Which is not here and.
Right, I mean, I think the Ash Tree one, it seems very straightforward as written, in my opinion. Uh, which will be here next Thursday. The River Road, I think, needs a lot of discussion, including at a staff level. Uh, and I've given it with Bush. I I met with him last week, and we'll meet again when he gets back to town next Monday. Uh, so I wouldn't recommend taking action on that one. I do think the townwide one is very straightforward, and it's just, you know, continuing with the program. So if you were, if you wanted to, you could act on that tonight, but the River Road one needs uh, some more.
The article request one, like you said, I think it's very straightforward.
On the Ash Tree.
Yeah, on the Ash Tree. To be clear, what I'm talking about is the removal of dead ash. Um, and and it's a continuation of the discussion we've had. We've really been searching how to attach the dollar amount to it. It seems to me that that things are proceeding at pace. And this is just the next round. What are we planning for, or didn't plan for? It's the next round. It's right there in front of us.
But did we expect the next round to be at the Fall Con meeting? I did not.
No, we didn't, but but it's here. I mean, which is put together.
So we talked about putting it in the budget, right, in the operating budget?
Or they want to get a view of the production rates for the Ash Trees.
Right, right, right. Remember, so we had an article, as I recall, for fifty thousand specific to Ash Tree removal. That was a test drive to see what we could absorb, how much we would get done. When I look at this memo, I I I see someone's got their act together really good. Uh, and and unless someone wants to say, we don't have these trees to take down, I think we should proceed with this one.
So how much is in the budget for Ash Tree removal, or is it just general tree removal?
It was the Ash Tree and general, it's two different.
We had two different things, Ash Tree fifty and then one hundred for general.
I think it was, wasn't it eighty?
I think we had a total of a hundred and thirty for Ash Trees, so the eighty and the fifty would do that. They had a separate article, fifty, eighty in the budget, so.
So we have a general. Do you remember what they, on general one? Can you look it up? Thank you.
I mean, to Rob's point, it really doesn't matter, because at some point you're gonna be paying to take them down.
They have an inventory and they have vendors and the trees are out there.
But I think I think, you know, the question about what's budgeted, what's expended from the operating budget and what's projected to be expended from the operating budget is a is a definitely fair question.
It's a fair question.
We can have for next week that I don't have right now.
Right, because you're saying then this could go.
But that's not something we have at our fingertips.
Right, so so you're saying this could go against the hundred, you know?
Well, I'm I'm gonna assume that because it's being brought forward as an article, that they they've already projected that what, that it exceeds what's in the operating budget, but
Right.
because, yeah, this came in, you know, just last. because, yeah, this came in, you know, just last weekend, you know.
So that question is open, we should wait for.
Yeah, yeah, he'll be here next Thursday and Caitlin Barker as well.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Well, we talked to each trees too. We requested of the tree committee a while ago to find out what the final analysis was on the successfulness of the treatments that they did. Doesn't appear to have been. Well, actually, this this may be answered it. Um EBW has recently con- contracted for the tree company to evaluate the eighty eight trees that received their first injection back in June of twenty twenty three. Out of those eighty eight trees, only fifty nine were deemed healthy enough to receive the second injection. Those twenty nine trees not receiving the second injection will be added to the tree removal list. The fifty nine healthy trees will be receiving their second injection within the next few weeks. So is that answer or what you want there, Chris?
My question in the beginning, how many are they looking at originally? Way more than eighty eight. It wasn't, it was two or three different options. Do you recall?
Option one, option two. We went for, we went for bulk, bulk levels, tier one, tier two. So it was about a hundred and eighty eight trees, I think. I don't know. We'd have to look it back. I mean, I like this synopsis that we.
Well, but that may not be the whole story.
It may not be the whole story.
Because I don't have a complete picture of my, and with that. Then I would ask questions about. Got uh five different phases of taking out these trees and ranges anywhere from almost six hundred dollars a tree to two hundred and eighty a tree. I went for two eighty, I don't know. I mean, they average out to two hundred and eighty six dollars a tree. So what what's the cause for all? Yeah, I mean, that's.
I wish I had an answer.
You don't know, yeah, I'm sure of the size of the trees.
You can see the separate work being done.
Seems like they got a lot of work done for fifty grand. But I don't know how big hundred, you know, again, were those eight inch diameter trees or were they, like we said, a big tree? But I was saying that there's three hundred and seventy five trees that they want to remove and they basically removed a third of them for fifty grand. About a penny C third or the hard third. Yeah.
Now, Fred originally started talking about this, which was probably two or three years ago. His comment, which gave me a heart attack, he said it's gonna cost forty five thousand dollars a tree to take them out.
Yes.
It's not as bad, it's for a painted depiction.
That was the selling point for the.
And unfortunately, when you start the injection, there's no endpoint for the injection. So I remember that comparing the one-time injection to the one-time felling of the tree, both were totally inaccurate.
So make a comment that I did at a previous select board meeting. I was out at Baudslay probably two months ago, walking along. And there's a guy with a backpack going around sticking a probe in the ground and treating pine trees. And by the tree service, so I happened to stop and talk to him. I said, did you do the trees in West Newbury, the Ash Tree? He goes, yeah. I go, this is the same exact process. I said, it seems pretty simple for what you were charging us. I said, yes, you could do it yourself. It's gonna take some like ten minutes a tree. Put the probe in the ground. So going forward in the future, if the town wants to consider treating trees, you might want to just buy a little backpack and a magic wand. So, Chris, was it, he says the same process is the same, is the same. The same chemical.
Yeah.
And do you need a pesticide applicator license to do it?
I'm gonna ask him too. I'm just saying, well, what you pay him for these trees, get somebody in town to
Yeah.
to get the licensure for that if it's required. He wasn't wearing a mask or anything. He shouldn't have been doing it and chatting away. He's on the by it.
But to Ross's point, I think, looking at what's been accomplished, the number of trees and the dollar amount, that's a good news.
You almost don't need to build into the budget, is there?
That's good news. Well, then then we need an explanation of what's in the budget. Does the budget really include this, not include this? I mean, it's it's just. Well, we have our account, yeah, that's right.
All right.
I I think so, I'm not hearing anybody.
Yeah, we're not gonna do anything more with them than what we're at, and Butch will tell us.
All right, Article thirteen.
So I am still working on a uh a supplemental memo that's got more background, including uh for instance, a prior year revenue projected versus actual turn back amount. Some of the data that was provided last cycle. Uh so I have, I have that in my own draft form. It's pretty well along, but it's gonna, it takes a couple more hours of work. I will have that by the end of the week. Uh it's included in a package for next Thursday's meeting.
Okay.
Uh so I think helped uh inform the conversations.
And FinCom, where are we on the target?
Angus and I have been talking and we're gonna uh react to the analysis.
But wasn't the idea that you were you were gonna come up with the balances? Because that's what's always been the question every time we have this.
We're gonna talk about that.
Okay, I was hoping. To say we need X in free cash, X in stabilization, therefore, you know, we can turn back. X minus free cash. That's not happening.
Until next week.
All right.
Can't wait to see you.
Yep. So Article fourteen, unpaid prior year bills, nine oh two, forty three. Anything to highlight here, Jenny?
Um, nothing to highlight, we just came in obviously related to the theme, so.
Yeah. Are we ready to vote on this? You you don't expect any others?
Someone that requires like nine tenths focus on meeting.
Can I ask a couple silly questions on it?
Sure.
Why on the Hiller? Invoice date is the twenty third of this this, May sixteenth of twenty twenty three. But it has us stamp receiving it on August twenty sixth. That's mail's really slow to some of.
I think that was, if you recall, we had killer invoices the last time. This was within that same series of killer invoices that were missed. Um and somehow it did not get included.
So then on the clock guy. First of all, where's his clock that he works on?
That's, I I have that same question. Do we know where this bug is?
Here, I think it's, is it? Yeah, Brian and I have signed the invoice if it's, but I I I uh.
And then my next question, follow up to that, does anybody verify that this work is actually done?
Yeah, Brian signs the invoice. He's he's attesting that the work was done, yeah.
Which is, I curiosity, find it like a clock is.
Yeah, he he mentioned it one point, I just don't remember. You said it's funny, I don't.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
All right, does that need to hold up the vote? I mean, I feel like we have to pay our bills, right? All right, so do you want to wait then till next week? All right.
I think we should wait.
Okay.
It should be a thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Maybe sixty seconds.
With this guy, it might be six years for.
All right, so are we ready to move on to the right to farm bylaw?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a treasure.
That's more of a collective. I'm excited for Caitlin on that one.
Thank you, Jenny.
Appreciate it.
All right, so FinCom, have you, do you have any questions about this? So let me just summarize for you the process. This, these are some of the folks that are on the ad hoc committee. They drafted a bylaw, they've had several meetings, other representative from Senator Char's office attend the meetings to try to have them along. I attended some of them. Uh they came up with a draft bylaw and submitted it for distribution to town committees and boards and departments and received feedback um on that. I don't know that all of that feedback was incorporated in the version that you see here now. So that's kind of a summary of. So, um and to my knowledge, there's been no public meetings or distribution of information or anything like that. So any questions or comments?
Oh, I read it. Um thank you. Uh I I guess dumb question perhaps, but what is the difference between the bylaw and what it kind of the current situation is? Like what, like what is the, I I guess, what is the impetus behind this and and what is what will this bylaw actually accomplish?
I think that what it would accomplish is elevating the level of awareness that Massachusetts is a right to farm state. I don't think as citizens of Massachusetts, we know what the majority of the laws are that are on our books. And we are in a community that um has a lot of agricultural pursuits in it. And many towns in Massachusetts are simply putting a right to farm bylaw article in place to simply educate the townspeople that that agricultural pursuits do have rights. And as a realtor, I also see it as being important to kind of raise that level of awareness because in a lot of cases, we get people who move into our communities, and I'll say communities in general, because it just doesn't affect our town. Uh where they may be coming from a more like from Andover or Cambridge, and they're not familiar with a more rural setting. And then they move to our area and discover that there may be farms or, uh you know, and they and then friction occurs. So I think that's why it would be important to have this proposed bylaw in place, just to really not only support our agricultural pursuits, but to just really raise the level of awareness and to educate folks that this law does exist. And we just want to kind of reaffirm it, that it is there for them. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, and and I guess so. And one of the parts I read was that when there's a a a purchase and sale agreement, then then there's a certain amount of time in some that the buyer, I believe, gets something in the mail that says, hey, you're in a butter or two a farm as a result of that.
It's not even that you're buying a farm. So I can speak to this as well because as a realtor, we have these forms all the time. So this is when we talk about raising the level of awareness to people who are moving into these communities. Typically after the purchase and sale side, usually it's it's accompanying the purchase and sale agreement. There's just a simple paragraph that says, we want to make sure you're aware that Massachusetts in general is a right to farm state and that we are a right to farm community. Uh we want to make you aware of this. So it's it's usually signed well before the sale. And as realtors, it's our job to know what towns are right to farm towns, so we make sure it's included in the packet. And also the Board of Assessors or the Assessor Department has the opportunity usually at the beginning of every year to kind of send a reminder out with that first tax bill that says, you know, just want to remind you, if you happen to sell your home, you know, we need this form signed. So it's pretty straightforward and pretty easy.
And when you talk about the fine, you're talking about only the disclosure notification.
Correct.
Is that typical and ordinary for the select board to be doing fines? I mean, what's the mechanism for doing a fine in town?
I think a big question.
You come late.
I I quite honestly, I I I find the whole idea of fine a little silly, quite honestly. And I I I also am troubled by the fact that there's something being imposed upon a property owner um that they absolutely have, that there's a new form of the town's origin that is imposed upon property owners who choose they want to sell the property. What if it's some, somebody who's not selling through a realtor? What if they're selling themselves? And they don't meet that. Then they're subject to a three hundred dollar fine because they didn't, they didn't hire a uh or contract with a with a realtor in order to do the job. I I just, I I won't have that trouble.
Very often, uh the closing attorney will catch it. Um so there's a, there's a number of levels um where that form will probably be called to attention. I can't say in my thirty five plus years of doing this that we've ever had trouble getting a form or having a homeowner object to providing a form. It hasn't been a concern in the past.
This form hasn't been required, correct? So far, this form hasn't been required.
Not in West Newbury.
Right.
Yeah, the three hundred dollar fine was kind of standard practice that we discovered for other towns. So we didn't just kind of come up with that number. That's what other towns were doing. If you folks wanted to pose a different number, I don't think that any of us would find that objectionable. We were just kind of going with what was the precedent set before us.
But is a fine even necessary? I guess that's a question.
Well, what, how else of, how else do we have people then not provide the form? It's like not having a dog license. If you don't have a dog license and you're not fined for not having a dog license, then why would you get the dog license? I guess would be my example.
I think we were told that this was modeled after the state bylaw. Now, I'm speaking for Barry Ogle, maybe I'm out of line, but I think he said that the statement did not have a fine in there on the model bylaw. So that would be different. In fact, he's correct and he's a pretty smart fellow, so I think he is. But my questions would then go further. Is there any violation? Now, what constitutes a violation? And then, as with the wetlands bylaw previously, it's every day another violation. Nothing, nothing is defined here. And to expect the select board to find somebody for something which.
The violation does go to this section.
Yeah, it goes to the.
But it's every day and they don't have the paper?
That's a great question. That's not addressed here, right?
Right, so, and if you said how the towns have the three hundred, I'm not sure where that comes from. And that's just, you know.
We did a, we did extensive research and spoke to other towns that have right to farm bylaws. And we took a lot of their input. And we also looked at other towns' actual bylaws and I don't think there was one in there that didn't have a fine associated with it. We can certainly clarify the language in there, that it's a one-time violation fee, because that's what it is.
One transaction.
Yeah.
That would have to be in there, but in general, I think our town has expressed numerous times resistance to the imposition of fines in other matters. It's it's always a point of contention. So I want to do education. Perhaps we could consider doing it without a fine.
So what will be the circumstances under which somebody will be fined as a donor, somebody selling?
They have twenty one days from the execution of a purchase and sale agreement to have the form signed and a buyer note of file. And every, you know, the buyer's.
This is similar to the wet notice, correct? Very similar. So so it becomes standard. The only problem is most closing attorneys don't know whether it's applied to a town or doesn't apply to a council.
The state requirement, is it not? Is it a wet notice?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So so what I'm saying is the, the uh, this isn't statewide and the closing attorney may not even catch that that in unless nobody, it's in place. That that could be problematic administratively. The fine issue itself is problematic for a good deal of the people that go to town in it.
But you know, if the agents don't catch it and it's something that the seller overlooks, they're gonna get a three hundred dollar fine and then they're leaving town, so why would they pay it?
Right, you don't say, hey, you've got no, you've, you've got no way to collect that money from someone who sells it off the.
The only.
Fines on the seller. So you have to catch that within, before the closing.
Right.
And if you don't, it's gonna require you to put it on the.
What allows you to stop the closing? Is there something that allows you to stop the closing if they haven't paid?
Yeah. No, and I had offered um Rich, since I. And I had offered Rich, since I had access to all of the M L S records and I know it's going under agreement, I told him that I could easily keep him up to speed with what properties are under agreement so that we can kind of keep track of who's submitted a form and who hasn't.
Yeah, that, that, that doesn't work as a process.
Yeah.
So can you give us an example or two as to how this would benefit the town if this bylaw was in place? Because I'm not following, other than this awareness as to what the mantle would be.
Well, let me give you the answer to that. Because I was talking to Sam this morning, the building inspector. And he said he gets, you know, regularly gets complaints of people that there's a rooster growing in the next door, next door, or that somebody's fertilized their fields and the neighborhood stinks or something like that. And right now, you know, he, he doesn't have anything. But with this law, you can say, look, when you moved into town, you agreed that this is a right to farm community. You were informed. You were informed. You knew what you were getting into when you bought in the West Newbury.
But there is a state, that's already a state law.
Right, right.
So...
What does it mean for somebody who already lives here? I mean, that's...
It's, well, yeah.
You've got to get rid of all of us first.
It's like, it almost sounds like it's a, it's an indirect means of, like, preserving the character by, you know, advertising what, what we, what some folks in town might be about, I guess. Or do you need a bylaw to do that? I mean, do we get a billboard? Do we put it on the website? Again, it seems like everybody has this right already.
I'll just say that, I'm sorry. I grew up on a chicken farm. And everybody started moving in because it's beautiful. People take pictures of it, they take pictures of it. But chicken farms stink.
Right.
So whenever we move manure with our nutrient management plan, we use generally accepted agricultural practices. And this bylaw would set up a commission of people in town that would be notified if somebody makes a complaint and go through the whole list of all the generally accepted agricultural practices. So if Mr. denies he's moving liquid manure, somebody complains about it, we can respond to that, whoever's ever on the board. And use it as an opportunity to let people know that he has every right to move manure. He is following his N R C S or state accepted plan. And he's doing it for the sustainability of this whole bylaw.
But to the question that was already asked, doesn't that already exist on the state law? One confused by Sam is really, really, really good. If, if he knows about the state law, when you say the state law? He, he can, but he, okay, I'm talking to him. And I've actually, I've heard people, I've heard of cases in town where the complaints have gone to the Select Board or the Board of Health and have been told, you know, basically to get rid of the animals.
Yeah, but this, there is something...
And we're not, not in this town, Steve.
Yes.
In the bylaws, there's something about...
Yeah, yeah. We took cows from Ross because his neighbors were complaining. He was bringing us his cows. And we got three of them because neighbors complained.
Yeah, but, you know, there are some towns that have bylaws that say you can't have this type of animal, you can't have that. I believe that I, at one point, researched it and was under the impression that there is an existing bylaw in this town that says that you can...
Yeah, that's zoning.
Right, right.
Yeah, but that's five acres or more. Well, right.
This whole bylaw, the state model, is based on commercial farming. That paragraph has been removed from here. So this could pertain to anybody. See, that's, this is significantly different than the model bylaw. And that's just one of the flaws in it. It's, it's got a lot of, I'm 100% in favor of the agriculture. I think most people in town, you look at everybody. A farm goes for sale, the town wants to buy it. You know that. We want to help people buy these farms and work on them and live on them. But this bylaw is not going to create the result you anticipate. It needs to be wordsmithed significantly, I believe, so...
We've had taken out the word "commercial" because when we spoke with other towns that have right to farm bylaws, they all said that in hindsight, that they wished that they didn't have the word "commercial" because there's a lot of homesteaders out there. There's a lot of small farms or, you know, small livestock operations that are covered under right to farm. And so they actually said, we wish that we didn't have that in our bylaw, which is why we took it out, because we were trying to improve upon what is out there based on the feedback we received. So that's why we did that, Chris.
It reflects our community, which have a number of people that want to farm in their, on their small, on their smaller acreage and sell their produce and sell their eggs. And that's what we were trying to bring them.
Well, it's a bit more sense, and I'm not trying to dump another load on our already overworked town government. But for the town to actually, instead of having an imposition on sellers of property, to, to at some point make it fire beware, like, you got, you got to look at the community you're moving into. So if there was something on our website, on the town's website, and if there was, you know, there's been discussion at some point, we'll probably have a new, uh, new resident welcome packet. You know, if somebody moves into town, they get, obviously, that's after they've already bought, bought the place. But it would be perhaps included with that. And, and, and again, if it's on the website, if you're moving into a town and you've never looked at the town's website in today's world, you kind of miss something, you know, because that's basic information that's available for anybody. And, and, I mean, I personally wouldn't spend whatever it costs to buy a house here, you know, whether it's a half a million or a million and a half, I wouldn't spend that kind of money without looking at the town's website and understanding the community I was moving into. And at some point, it's, it should be the responsibility of the person who's moving in, you know?
In an ideal world, I'd totally agree with you.
Yeah.
From a real estate perspective, I can tell you that that's not what happens. People move into brand new colonial homes that are across the street from a farm that's gorgeous to look at. It, it may have 30 horses.
Just didn't have a newer spread yesterday.
And, and, and they say, oh, look at that beautiful fence and that beautiful field. And then they move in, and then they're all of a sudden like, what do you mean it smells? You know, they don't, they just don't realize. And I think, to Chris's point, having an agricultural commission really helps not only facilitate and open up dialogue between parties, but it also helps to maybe lower the tension levels with a little education. And I think that can really be important, and it's a critical part of this proposed bylaw, is that we're putting a, a commission or a committee in place to help facilitate and make everyone happy. And I think a lot of people move into a community and they think it's going to be great, and then they find out that they just weren't prepared for what it really is.
I think that there's parts of this that are, um, value-added, like what you just discussed. But I think that, you know, and I'm very supportive of agriculture and farming. Like she said, I, I have animals myself. But, you know, taking something that was drafted in a commercial context and applying it broadly without restriction concerns me because when you buy a property and it's next to a commercial property, it's readily apparent that there's going to be some activity over there that you need to sign on with, right? But if your neighbor gets a rooster and you're in a residential area, roosters are brutal. Like, you can love farms and animals and the whole thing. I have roosters. They crow every 15 seconds all day long. It's not just in the morning. Starting at 4:00 a.m., they crow until 7:00 p.m. It doesn't really bother me because I like chickens and they're nice. But like, when I'm around the house, they drive me crazy because they never shut up. So if my, you know, if you bought a house and then next week your neighbor gets a rooster, I don't know if that, you know, you can still be agriculturally supportive and not appreciate that, you know?
Well, I know a lot of towns have no rooster rules.
Yeah.
So the town of West Newbury has the ability to put a law in place that says you can't have roosters.
Right, but in the absence of that...
Correct, but that would be a solution, you know, if no one wants to listen to roosters. So in the absence of that, if somebody has a problem with it, they come to the Select Board and complain. You all aren't technically agricultural-based, so you would have the ability to turn to the agriculture and say, please go speak to the Agricultural Commission about that. And then it would be up to the commission to come to you and present it from an agricultural standpoint, not just the upset citizen too. So the importance of having the Agricultural Commission suits that.
So could I ask a question here on the definition? The word "farm" shall include any parcel or parcels of land for water body used for the primary purpose of agriculture? Is, is, is someone who has a residence and has secondary to the residence, farming not protected by this? I mean, has council looked at this?
No, no.
Okay, so, so I, I, I would read a sentence like that and say that in and of itself just leads me to wonder how well, I know how well-intended it is, but how well-written it is. When I read a sentence like that, all I can see is the number of discussions that happen till the end of time, no one being able to figure out what that really means.
And if I just, just clarify one point. I did send this whole packet to council on Thursday, but, but they haven't gotten it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it is, it is...
I'm using as an example, when I read stuff like this, no matter how well-crafted people, I remember sitting on the planning board. Luckily, there are people out there that can come in and write stuff for you, which is what you really want to do, because they've done it before. They know the, the use of language and all that. That, that sentence alone drives me a wall because I'm, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to have a viewpoint. Chris is going to say it means another thing, and Rick, Rick will agree with one of us, but not both.
So to make a picture, though, Wendy's preface, and when she started, there have been no public hearings, no education. We know the council hasn't reviewed it. I sent extensive markups to this committee, and I don't see any of them made it into the draft. So I don't, I think, I don't think you can move forward with a bylaw like this because once it gets implemented, the town owns it. So council hasn't even reviewed it. You should have public hearings to, to get input from people because this is the vision of your group and what you want. I don't think it fully reflects what would be acceptable in town. And we are an agricultural town, but I'm sure as you know, Catherine, an awful lot of people are moving here residential, very much so. So there is a balance. And it talks about you can do any activity, day or night, weekends and, you know, odors, dust, fumes, everything else. That in itself can become problematic. And then I think, and I know it's in the, I was told it's in the draft bylaw, it still doesn't make it right. I think the most problematic sentence in the whole document says, quote, "It is hereby determined that whatever impact may be caused to others through the normal practice of agriculture is more than offset by the benefits of farming in the neighborhood, community, and society in general." That's a pretty big statement to put in and make everybody in town bound to, so that's...
Can I respond to that? First off, the sentence that you were talking about, that's in Section 2, the definition, that came from the Massachusetts Model Right to Farm Bylaw.
That sentence, right, you mean?
No.
No, no, primary, primary. But that's commercial.
Primary, first, first.
That's to my point. It, it, that, that sentence implies that the use of the property goes to what someone mentioned about, oh, there's a commercial property. I get it. That's what that sentence seems to imply to me. Primary would, would not mean a resident that also has chickens and eggs.
But that also goes on to say, or accessory thereto?
Well, but then that becomes very arguable. Or, or accessory thereto meaning accessory to what? I'm telling you, this is, it's problematic language. If you pull it out of where the whole thing was about commercial, it means one thing, as soon as you get to residential, just...
Well, yeah, we can, we can, we can discuss that.
Right, but, but that, that sentence, it doesn't hang tight. It doesn't.
We'll, we'll look at that. Um, Chris, the language about agricultural activities occur in holidays, weekends, weekends, night, near day, and so on. That's already Massachusetts law. And again, that's in the model, Massachusetts Model Right to Farm Bylaw. So they already have the right to do that. We're not creating more rights for them. We're just restating them.
For commercial of this, though, right?
Correct.
Not for a citizen. Right, so it's being...
Well, I don't, I don't think under, a smaller scale homesteader is going to be out at midnight tilling his field in the night, but...
And it doesn't, it's...
Yes, that's probably just to reflect something like, you mowed two days ago, you conditioned the hay today, it's raining tomorrow. You got to get that, so you hay tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The commission sounds cool. I like the concept of, you know, uh, you know, trying to, you know, stay with the character of the town, as if everybody's interested about that. But it does seem a little bit expansive, a little bit over the broad. Because, you know, not all parts of town are agricultural. But like here, we're talking about applying, you know, agricultural rules to parts that are very un-agricultural, you know? I keep thinking of Sections of 113, it's just, you know, some parts are just residential, non-agricultural. So it just seems a little...
But the thing doesn't, this, the mass law already protects it whether you live in an agricultural part of the town or not. You know what I mean? Like, if this isn't imposing any new things, it's just kind of reinstating and highlighting what already exists.
Then why would we need it?
The city paper put in an ag commission without the right to farm bylaw. But they have not appointed anybody to the ag commission to write their right to farm bylaw. So it's kind of, they're in a standstill trying to figure out how they're going to do it. So that's why it was all included in this.
But to Chris's question, what you just asked, what was the question again, Chris, that you just asked?
Then why would you need this bylaw? It's already in place.
Because people are unaware that it even exists. So again, I kind of go back to the education and the, and letting people know that, that this law is, does exist in Massachusetts.
And also, could potentially provide that agricultural commission that can solve or help to solve some of these issues?
I don't recall that the Select Board has ever had to deal with agriculture.
Right, no. I think the Board of Health perhaps has had one or two.
Yeah, it sounds like Sam takes a lot of the calls.
So, Finn Kong, what, what do you think? I mean, do you want to, do you, is, is this something that you would offer?
Well, that's the first discussion we would have, is whether this is the type of thing that we'd make any recommendation towards at all. And so we have a separate discussion on that before we take any, do anything further. So what are you thinking about this particular warrant article? Is this a thing that we are going to make a recommendation on? And therefore, if we are, we would then have further discussion? We, we, right now, just without even taking up that question, I would say it doesn't appear immediately ready for time. I mean, I, I would not want any that town council, I haven't remarked back to, but then there's been other significant issues raised. But apart from that, what's your sense, you guys?
The only, is there more than just the fines that could be impacting anything in town? Dollar ones?
No, I don't think the fines really impact much of anything. It, it doesn't have to be dollars attached in order for us to make that decision.
Yeah, there are other dollars attached. There's a mailing that goes out each year to let people know, things like that. Those are questions I have in it, so it's not a total...
But we didn't take up, last year, there was some, like...
Yeah, there's always, there's always incidental fines.
But it was like, no, you're direct. Well, what you just admitted is the direct cost.
Yeah, but any, any sort of bylaw is going to potentially have a financial consequence. So if you ask for pay, pay attention to it, someone asks you to answer for it. So that alone doesn't, doesn't push it to a threshold. But what's your sense overall as to whether this is an item that we want to take up?
At this point, yeah, I guess I'm not inclined to say we got to have this to take it up. You know, there's an example that you gave about the roosters crowing. And Sam gets the, the brunt of it, he calls on that. And Sam gets the the bronco baby calls on that. Okay, that's one example. How many farms do we have in the in the community where you would be overseeing or providing guidance to anything they would be doing here or providing the council for a solution with this, with anybody might happen to raise a claim in town? I don't have a number for that. Is it ten? Is it a hundred in the community? How big is this problem?
Yeah, we sort of addressed that question to the to the group that are, you know, to your group. How how often are you aware of there actually being a problem? I mean, I've got neighbors with chickens and, you know, it's okay, they have chickens and, you know, eat them a little bit, so it's not a big deal. How many people complain? How many, I mean, how much of an issue is it?
So far, right now, we're in the, people love them, we're very thankful for. But there may become a time where people, that time changes. And, you know, this is part of food security, this is part of open spaces, all these things that people really care about. There's a plow and horns on your town's heel. I mean, it's been here for a long time, and what's left could really have some kind of footing underneath it to protect it, whether it's suspendism or something else. I'm not saying this is the only way forward, but there's going to be something for the future because it may not always be as as shiny as it is right now.
I think we're all in agreement with that concept. It's right, there needs to be some strong recognition and embracing of agriculture in this town. You look at the number of farms that have gone out of business, and it's very disappointing. So I just think this is a very flawed document. And I support your mission, so I don't, I'm torn on it, right?
Isn't the real, the real issue, since the bylaws already exist for Massachusetts, this commission that you want to create, can't that be done independently of coming up with a new bylaw because the bylaw already exists?
It could be, yeah.
I think that, like, I mean, I I feel like it's not ready for us to approve it, but the symbolism of us rejecting it maybe also wouldn't be in line with our, you know, support of the concept. So I would prefer to take no action.
Right, exactly, right, right. I was hoping that's where you were headed with that. I, no, no, I didn't, I didn't know what what the conclusion was. I think that's well, well spoken to. The rejection might be perceived as antagonistic.
Go on, kill it.
Right, right.
Just can't.
So, I mean, maybe a path forward is to create that awareness that there's a state bylaw that says everybody in town is entitled to agricultural use of land or make the greater town aware that this could be a concern in the future. And here's maybe some examples of that. And then, you know, build consensus amongst the community to gain, you know, feedback from them, it's just something that we guys, we need.
I'm not sure, Paul, on what you're saying.
Do a couple of things first. Create a, you know, greater awareness in the community of what you're trying to do with this bylaw. Just jump it in with the bylaw first, before you create the awareness. I think you're going to have people in the community questioning, why do we need this, just like we are, okay?
In all fairness, the Grange had an open meeting on this. We had a lot of people come. I put discussion out there on West Newbury Facebook page. So it's not like people didn't know what we were, what the Grange was trying to accomplish. And then we invited people and had an open forum. And I have, I wish I had brought it. I have, like, ninety people came to that regular meeting. I have email addresses and everyone wrote what they're interested in. So it's not like people aren't interested in this. The benefits from agriculture.
Those are all farm interested people, though.
No, it's not all of them have farms, though, but they're there.
Well, I think what Dan is trying to say is that those aren't the only people that would be voting. The entire town could vote.
Yeah, but but it's not like I didn't invite more people than, I mean.
That's fine, but sometimes the process actually takes a long, yeah, Rick, you know, you got to stop someplace, then you go someplace, then you go someplace. You're seeing a lot of sentiment, goodwill in favor of this. But you're also hearing a lot of people who can speak to ambiguities or or trying to set something up, like, for instance, no offense, but we can't rely on someone notifying us of pending sales. That's just not going to work. You know, there's, it has to be a mechanism that would be efficient. But one of the things we take up is, is this going to lead to something that's messy and and won't work because that ends up interfering with the rest of what people are trying to do in town government? That's why we spoke about things like the 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 policy of allowing our Airbnbs. That was particularly messy. That was very tough. That was, yeah, that was very lucky that Josh said, you don't have to worry about it. So we said, great, we can drop all that. But this is, one of the reactions is, how efficient, is it really going to work? Is it really going to deliver to what you what you're looking for? But in general, you you could take our pushback or our questioning as an indication that there's going to be other people feeling the same way. So I would, I would just say, don't be disheartened by this. But I think myself personally, I would want to see what exactly is already protected on the state law. I mean, in a document that says, these are the things that that Sam can say is protected. And then I would want to see what else might need to be done in order to make it best fit our community. We already have zoning where we've decided that you can't do piglets, right? Well, thank goodness, because if you ever driven over to Newbury, the poor guy who lives on a hill across the piglet, that's like the worst sight in town. So it it, there are elements of this that are problematic. They're not problematic for you, but the things that we would have to end up dealing with. So that, that's what you're hearing a lot of now. I would just offer that. I like, to our committee, I I would like to take a vote on what I take to be a motion if it gets seconded to not take this up.
So can you explain to them just our 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 theory behind taking no action visually?
You 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 did.
Yeah.
You should repeat it.
Yeah, we we, we're a finance committee, you know, we have the ability to weigh in on a lot of issues, but we try and leave certain things up to the will of the town that don't have immediate financial, you know.
Direct, immediate.
Yeah, immediate, you know, financial implications, you know, direct financial implications. So that's really what we're talking about, is just taking no action, kind of punting on it, letting the select board weigh in, letting the town weigh in. So we're not trying to kill your motion here, we're just giving you feedback, but we're talking about punting, if you will.
I think you gave us all some excellent information and some good questions were asked. And I think that taking no action makes sense. This isn't like it's a huge budgetary thing that you need to concern yourself with. So I think what I'm going to recommend is that we go back as a group and we take your feedback. And we maybe will get slight modifications. And it was definitely our intention to have informational meetings with the townspeople so that they could also ask questions prior to putting this to town vote to make sure that everyone has their opportunity to discuss it and ask their questions and get clarification.
Please do, after that, you do need the time. This, now, the timing of this, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to get people's attention adequate enough to take their measure of, I would, I I think it would be too quick.
Okay, for the fall town meeting.
For the fall town meeting, yeah.
To Dan's point, you know, if if, once it goes to town meeting and gets squished, that's a problem. You know, so if it's due to lack of awareness, it might be good to.
How's that work? Is it, if if you go to town meeting and it's down, is it just a zoning box?
That's only for zoning.
Okay, okay.
And and that, and you can do it if you have a favorable recommendation of the pine wood. It's not a question here.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think in terms of, you know, the success and politics, that it's problematic to get shot down, you know, before it's fully vetted, yeah.
Yeah, trust me, I went through that in the spring. I got shot down in the spring. I was right, but everybody.
Where's the town meeting, so you can't be right and still lose the vote. You got to remember that.
Yeah. I I think you should take away a sentiment of support on this.
Oh, I I think that we we do. And I I appreciate that we were able to have such a good dialogue about it and really help us to look at it and flesh it out a little bit and come back to you folks.
Seems like a long term goal, you know, I mean, in the short term, this budget cycle, I don't think.
One question on this, Angus, you've already sent this to town council. I just want to make sure it doesn't get pulled because I'd love to hear, you know, town councils edits to it, as long as all the, you know, Barry Vogel sent us a number of really good edits, was today or yesterday.
A couple of days ago. And I have the, I have the same desire to see town council review it and to see what they come back with.
So is your intention to pull back then, or?
I think we have to talk.
Okay, so we're on a pretty tight timeframe, so we would have to know by next Thursday.
You you would need a revised draft by next Thursday.
Yeah, well, so, but I just want to say, from my point of view, I mean, you all know that I'm very supportive of this, but but I feel like not having public input is very problematic. You don't want to just bring the farmers along, you would bring everybody along.
Correct.
Yeah, and if you give us something next Thursday, then we have to relook at it. So it wouldn't really be next Thursday, it'd be next Monday, and, you know, it it you're, you're running out of money. Understood, and and the political aspect of the timing is, that influence very much appreciated. As as are your efforts.
Yeah, no, I I think it's great, you know, in general terms, a great idea, but there are a lot of things to figure out and a lot of things that I think still need to be justified so that you can answer questions that would come up in 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 the town meeting discussion.
Right.
It's very, I think it's similar to the wetlands bylaw where there's already state regulations and the Conservation Commission struggled to say what was different. So I think you need to be very clear about it's already protected.
That, that's a big point, knowing what's already protected. If it was easy enough to do, just having something that wholly absolutely reflects the state, like a starting point. And if you had things that you tweaked from that, that would be another point. But people would really want to look at that, they want to understand what's, what's the whole reason behind this? What am I missing? What's the unintended consequence if it hasn't been there for the state and we're bringing something new? And are we overlooking something, you know, that? So it, these things are, they're complicated. They can.
Understand.
Can I ask one last question? So suppose there was a, you know, a form and somebody filled it out.
Disclosure form?
Yeah, disclosure form. Do you, do you think people would decide from that form, from being presented with that form, advising them that they're moving into a a right to farm community? Would people choose not to buy a house here?
I think they would probably, to a degree, remain a little clueless until they moved in. But then the town has the ability to hold up this form and say, but you would have.
We told you so?
We told you so.
My approach would be a little different, right, as a seller, I'd be inclined to pay the three hundred dollar fine and not submit the form. I mean, really, it's a valid option.
Look at, look at this one, Chris. This is another way to look at it, is if if this bylaw was on our, on our, you know, it was an article, and you knew you lived in a right to farm community that required disclosure and you chose not to do it. And then the buyer moves in and discovers that they were supposed to have received a disclosure. Then they're going to sue you.
No, I'm going to come straight up, it's a disclosure, I'm not going to sign a warrant to sign, I'll pay the three hundred dollar fine, I just pocketed, you know, fine.
No, but I'm saying a buyer could move in and say, I didn't understand that I lived in an agricultural community, I don't like it. You never told me you were supposed to.
I think a better process would be to have an educational process rather than a punitive process. I think that becomes distasteful to most people. I mean, we, there is a process, we worked on it a year ago, a welcome packet to West Newbury. And this is something that could dovetail very nicely in there. Not saying you're going to get fined three hundred dollars, but please be aware, this is how this community works and we hope you can appreciate that. I think that's a, a softer approach, maybe, that could benefit.
Another comment.
That's always been kind of a preference.
Legal, Richie wants them to review it, but if they're going to make significant changes with our legal budget and what it costs, I think that might be better to wait until you get curbed up into modifications.
I think that's a fair point, if if you are considering changing.
Yeah, I agree.
It's on legal bills, right? And I think it does need legal review once you get to the the point you want to be. To have a bylaw pass at town meeting if it didn't have legal review, incredibly, it's illegal, unwise.
It's illegal.
Well, we really appreciate you guys giving us all your feedback and asking all your questions. And we will, we convene as a group and make further determinations.
All right, sounds good. Give me that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
And remember, you can reach out and talk to individuals as well.
All right.
If we end up a question.
I'll see how far I get.
Oh, oh, we do have, yeah, there's a hand raised by Lisa for question. Looks like we have a question via Zoom that I I haven't seen because the screen doesn't, was blocked.
Lisa, are you still there?
Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, um, yeah, I just wanted to to just weigh in just briefly, um, you know, when when we were researching this, we did a lot of legwork and talked to different towns. And as far as the real estate disclosure form, talking to people in Newbury, they, I talked to several realtors as well, there, there has not been a problem. You know, as you go into these towns, they are proud of the fact that they're a right to farm community. They actually have signs, you'll see when you go in, that says, we are a right to farm community. Again, just reiterating that this bylaw, other than the fine, is taken directly from the actual state bylaw. And so people have seemed to have a lot of problems with it, but the problems that you're having with it are, you know, are, you're already under that jurisdiction. The other thing I just wanted to highlight was, you know, our farmers in town, who we, you know, I think of every resident in town is so thankful for and truly appreciate, have come to our meetings as well and, you know, support this bylaw. You know, every survey that the town does and and when, you know, we we talk to our residents, people unanimously generally say the most important thing to them is the polack feeling of the town, the agricultural feeling, and you don't have that without farms. And this bylaw not only, you know, makes a statement that the town is in support of farming, but, you know, supports the farms in general as well. It's 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 almost like a way of reaching out to these farms and saying, you know, we support you, we value you, and here's what we're doing to do that. So I'm I'm concerned that a no action vote actually does say something, and it says, you know, we're not, we're not willing to go forward with this. I I hope, I hope that we can have this go forward for this meeting in October. That that's my hope, that I don't know if we're going to now have timeframe or if we're going to have legal look at it, but uh, town council, but I I I I hope that we can do that because I think a lot of people are counting on it and 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 hoping that we can pass this. Another thing that I will say briefly is that talking to the different towns and asking them, you know, what roadblocks did you, did you encounter putting this bylaw forward in your town? And they didn't. And and when it came to town vote, they all said this was pretty much unanimous as a vote. So I, for one, am surprised at the amount of pushback on this and disappointed.
Okay, thank you. Sorry we didn't notice that your hand was up.
It's all right.
All right. Thanks. All right, so let's head back to article one, bylaw to authorize the tax of hydrocompayment agreements.
This is a kind of a housekeeping article, kind of an interesting background on this one. What I put up in front of you on the screen here, this is from the October 2018 town meeting. And the context for this, the town had had the, uh, DLS grant to look at best practices financial policies, one of which was a tax title policy. And the draft policy from the state made clear that in order to adopt that policy, you had to have accepted the MGL that it was based on, that specifically authorized the treasurer collector to enter, uh, tax repayment agreement subject to certain, uh, specified things, such as you have to have 25% of the balance due, there's certain provisions in there. So, uh, this is brand new here and, uh, working with the then board. And this is what was put to that town meeting at that time, was to accept this mass general law. This was with the direction of then town council. More recently, Caitlin Gilbert, our treasurer collector, brought me a copy of the statute. And what the statute says, and she kind of paraphrased this in the article request form, is that the town may establish this by bylaw. So, so the town had the intent in October 2018 to offer it to us, they accepted the MGL. The mechanics of this, that's not, that doesn't actually
We didn't have bylaw.
You need to adopt a bylaw. So it's really a housekeeping thing, the town already expressed its policy intent to allow tax repayment agreements, but didn't do it properly, so that's why we're here.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a pretty generic bylaw. I haven't, I did refer the town council along with everything else I got, uh, when, when the warrant was closed. Haven't gotten their input, so there might be some, I doubt it, it's pretty generic. And the other thing you can expect for next, uh, Thursday's materials is, you know, to see this, uh, draft that, that Caitlin had put together actually in the form of the town bylaws, like what section it would be and the numbering, and to make it more look like our current bylaws. But, uh, but basically that's, that's what this is, is to give the treasurer collector the legal authority to enter repayment agreements.
So does that mean she's been acting without the legal authority?
There's, there's only one property owner in town that's ever, at least been hurt for four plus years tenure. There's actually only one property owner in town that has, so yes, she, she had entered.
In, in one case.
In one case.
In one case, yes.
So, but, but yeah, so, uh.
Yeah, so we need to do this.
Yeah.
So we need to do this. So i- i- would this be appropriate to say yes to ahead of seeing stuff next Thursday?
I think it would, I mean, if there was any, you're, you're gonna see the change, but there's not gonna be any material change. So yeah, to, to me, it really is a housekeeping thing.
Have you guys taken action on them?
No, we haven't taken action on any.
Wouldn't it be better if we tell council, just in case there's something
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no, you know, there's no rush, it's just a matter of.
Okay. We'll wait.
Let the record know that Chris wants a delay.
No, I wanna get the right answer, I mean, we can do whatever you want, we can vote the wrong issue, I don't care.
Our, our council the last time around, so this was
I think it's, I think the differ.
Go ahead, beg.
I think the differ, we can agree to what the warrant says and make a recommendation, support what the warrant article says without seeing final language. We can just do what you did before and say that's subject to appropriate final language. But we'll wait until next week, as you wish.
No, you have your, you can
No, no, we'll wait until next week.
Bet you make a motion.
Next week. Next week.
I'm the pro materialian, bro.
I have to prove we're doing next week, though. Cause I haven't got final language.
Don't you get a gavel, probably?
Exactly.
No, you take a gavel.
Put in a bigger one. You've looked, you've looked like you wanted to use it a few times.
All right, we're done then, right?
We're done?
Until next Uh, well, the thing comes, you, you put our Now we have to look quite quick, that, that'd be next week as well, okay, good.
And we're a little different now.
So hopefully, you know, even though, you know, relatively few votes were taken, hopefully tonight's meeting will allow the meeting next Thursday to really focus on the, the target, we'll just jump to the questions and not go through the preamble and the presentation, because you've basically heard that. We will, you know, we will have article sponsors like Butch and Christine Wallace and, uh, and others here, so, so
Which is always very helpful.
Yeah, definitely, but, uh, but I still think it's, it's great that we were able to at least touch on everything, you know.
Cool.
So if the right to farm bylaw comes back, I mean, I will not entertain a long conversation about it next week, just because we've already done that.
I don't know where it's going, but I don't think it's good.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this, I think I would love to see them hold off until it's spring and get a
I think they just had me to talk about that and, and wrap their heads around the fact that it's not ready for prime time.
Well, Lisa Olson's the driver on the committee and she works it on the, so edit. I don't think is the wisest choice, but that's up to them.
Right, and I think, I mean, the small town for this, small town meeting is generally a smaller audience. If anything, this type of bylaw, I think, needs a big audience, like we have with the wetlands process in the spring town meeting.
They should, but, but in terms of expected success, they need to be more successful.
Because, because it is, I mean, they can bring it, we can't say that it can't be on the warrant.
Sure.
Citizens petition.
It's not a citizen petition. No, it wouldn't need
And the warrants, oh.
Right, it would have needed a hundred signatures to, to be a citizen petition.
But we also have in the past voiced a sentiment that, uh, we would try to avoid bringing things to fall. And spring was inappropriate forums for certain things. So there is that as, as, as a thing to remember.
Hopefully they'll come back in the spring, get some education, have some public hearings, you know.
Seems like they're jumping.
It is a great concept, it's just not
I don't think it has to be done the way they're doing it, I, I'm not so sure that actually
I don't even know if we need it.
I don't know, I think we just do a mission, I mean, I, that might be, I don't know what they would do, but
They could ask the select board to appoint a mission.
Yeah, first, first, and I think that would make more sense, because then they could actually So this, this, as I see it, doesn't actually do anything to promote agriculture in town. What it does is it tries to protect agricultural uses that already exist or that might come up, but it isn't actually actively promoting agriculture.
It's more, it's more of a reaction to someone complaining about
Or a fear reaction.
To that point, Rick, when we had the first markup, they had four bullet points of what the objective of that group was. Exactly what you said was to promote and educate agriculture, what I put in there, then rejected that, so I
That's another issue, like comments offered by the open space leave conservation, Chris, we're not incorporated. So if you're a process wise, that's not an active problem.
So like, is, is it, is it trying to promote it on the commercial side or the residential side? Are they trying to get
Trying to plant it so that it like makes it fuzzy.
As a commercial, people know presumably what their rights are and they probably don't very care what, you know, when people infringe on those rights. So are they trying to
Arise it among more agriculture amongst non-commercial people?
Well, I mean, I think one, it sounded to me like, you know, they, they brought up the issue of chickens next door, you know, and, and you know, there are people who don't like to listen to chickens next door.
Particularly roosters.
And, and, yeah, well, yeah, particularly roosters. But, you know, but whatever, people just don't like having chickens next door, or they don't like listening to goats bleat or
Maybe they have the right issue, but not the right solution. That's my feeling on this. And I think it can be done ways that are way more acceptable and probably more efficient than
More positive.
More positive.
I just feel like we get jammed on the timeframe if they come back wanting to pull next week. That's gonna be a problem.
What will, what will happen then, it will be problematic because then we'll have a discussion as to whether we can bring it forward given its deficiencies. Different discussion, yes, than what you said.
But even if we continue to abstain, if this select board were to vote it down, that would be a problem for them.
Yeah. Right, but I'm saying we, we might have a further discussion about whether we would abstain or not. If it's, if it's a little too problematic, then we have an obligation to speak to it, right? I mean, if, if something was, was worthy, yeah, if something was worthy, but we elected not to, that's one thing. But if you look at something and say, this is flawed on the face of it.
I think they should do a briefing first, have the information work on this. They tried to say it didn't work in April, we don't know why it didn't work in April, but I went to
Cause they didn't point anybody.
Yeah, right.
And, and I was looking at it, that was Mayor Ferretini, that was a while.
Twenty, twenty twenty.
Oh, that wasn't that long ago.
Yeah, but not, it wasn't.
It wasn't. Well, that would make them feel like they're progressing, they're making progress, making a little bit of headway, huh?
So, um, we'll have two more meetings, the last one might in fact involve the select board. So we, we all kind of agreed to that. Were you agreed to next week, Dan? What did I agree to next week? Yeah. You and I talk later or? I was just looking at the chart up there, and I'm saying, what we defer to next week?
Twenty six, I'm going to There's more, I mean, really, everything that wasn't acted on is, is, uh, next week, the only one that I think was explicitly not next week is the bridge, just cause it'll be ten to before we know if that's needed, but I think everything else, the idea was
You're, you're looking at the load for next week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, on select board, we get twenty six.
But we'll talk later, you and I will talk later.
That's it.
In terms of, in terms of meetings that are explicitly anticipated for article recommendations.
Twenty six and then the tenth of October.
Yeah, correct.
Something gone in between, I swipe.
Yeah, yep, yep. Uh, it's gotta be, uh, the fourteenth is, so it's the Monday, Monday the fourteenth.
But we'll, we'll have probably everything resolved except for one or two next week.
I think so. That's it all, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we can start writing next Friday.
And I have for whatever reason, two, two dates on the week, the first week of October, the second and the third, did I misinterpret that? Like
We, we did it all the way since Wednesday, we're doing our normal Wednesday, which is what day?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So
And then, and go ahead.
So Thursday then is, it's, it's
You're not even meeting on Thursday. I don't know why
No, I don't think there's anything referred.
Okay, did, didn't I confirm the second?
You did, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, where, where have you been to the second?
Earlier, you said second or third, no?
Yeah, yeah, way earlier, right. So that's probably why you did that, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, it's only, only Wednesday I have everything.
Yep.
All right.
So I, I do think, you know, I'm looking at you, Ross, and you, Rick, uh, you know, whether the CIC is willing to vote his recommendations this Thursday as opposed to having a meeting and maybe a second meeting is gonna, is gonna be a big thing. Some of these capital, they kind of came up on short notice, um, so we'll see if the committee is inclined to really press through on this Thursday, I'm, I'm hoping they will, um, cause if that, you know, it's not that
Isn't only one of them?
Well, that's the thing we keep haggling about with the committee is whether these studies are, are capital items, but that's a different discussion. And, and I think like the, the tank repairs, even though it's above 20,000, it's really debatable if that's a capital item.
A repair, right.
Yeah, but, but
A repair of an existing item quite often is treated as a repair, not a
Yeah, so it's, there's, right now, there's, there's a fair amount of, uh, mashing of pieces.
Yeah, well, that's, uh, that's a bylaw that needs to be revised at some point.
Amen.
But Angus, we don't even, we don't take votes on that committee, right?
Well, you, they, they rate, they
I don't know, we need the whole
True to what effect?
You're gonna have output on that. And then, and then, and then you're
And then we do whatever we want, so it's just a waste of everybody's time, did I say that out loud?
You're being reported to, so make that work. As a part of the period. I know. So, so are we approaching adjournment?
I agree to.
Yeah, make a motion to withdraw the finance committee.
Is there a second? All in favor? It's unanimous, we're adjourned.